Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cardisville City Council to order. If you will please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Gracious God, creating power, redeeming love, guiding spirit. We offer ourselves to do the people's business with commitment and integrity. Guide us in doing this work for the well-being of this city and for all its citizens. And in all that we do, this will bring honor to your name. Amen.
Could you woman pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keeling, the role, please.
Carrie Hodges, Ward 1, here. Jay Stepp, Ward 2. Louis Tonsmire, Ward 3.
Right here.
Lindsey McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Taffrey, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Connie. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from September the fifteenth. Council, you've had these well in advance tonight, had an opportunity to look them over. Now would be the time to make any edits or corrections. If there are none, a motion would be in order.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved unanimously. We have got the honor of recognizing one of our own tonight, State Representative Paul Battles, and for his work with the Georgia Municipal Association in helping to serve local governments. And I'm going to call forward Michael McPherson with the Georgia Municipal Association to say a few words and to make that presentation. What was yours? Michael?
Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council, thank you for allowing me this time tonight. I am Michael McPherson with the Georgia Municipal Association, and it is my honor to present Chairman Paul Battles with the Champion of Cities Award. This award is given out at the end of the two-year session to those who understand and put forward the tenants of home rule and local control. Chairman Battles was one of the folks that worked very hard to gain back a little bit of that control over the use of fireworks within our city limits and ensuring that our local ordinances as they pertain to noise can actually apply to fireworks. So we definitely applaud him for that and all of the other things that he has done for us over the past several years in terms of allowing us to try and get better economic data from within our bounds that the state has. And so with that, on behalf of the cities of the state of Georgia, I present to you, Chairman Battles, this Champion of Georgia Cities Award.
Thank you. Just very quick, the...
Some of the things that we tried to do and hopefully we are working in ways and means to make some corrections as far as being a little more transparent in sales tax and use tax distributions. And we hope to have that resolved this coming year. We've told the Department of Revenue that they could either solve it themselves or we could do it constitutionally. And so it's an either/or, but we think that will be a big help in knowing that we're getting all of the money we're collecting in our communities. So thank you so very much. Thank you for the honor of serving in the fifteenth district and which includes a big part of all of the city of Cardisville and looking forward for the next two years.
And I want to thank you for your continued service in that office and also for the many things you've done in this community for a number of years and having a positive impact on what we do here. So it is a well-deserved honor and we are delighted to have you here with us tonight to be...
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We have the second reading of some ordinances tonight, and I'll ask Mr. Manino to get us started with the chapters six, Article 10 and 11 for unfit building and structures and blighted property.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is revisions to update the unfit building ordinance that's already in place. Additionally, it does add a tax penalty and tax credit incentives to encourage compliance of blighted properties. With that, there have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
Any questions for Mr. Manino on this item? Is there any discussion to be had? If there's none, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving too fast for you?
Thank you again. This is also a second reading for the tourist accommodation and extended stay rental standards that are already in place. With that, the main change to this particular ordinance is the section dealing with health department requirements. They were not in there before. What this does, it adds those into our ordinance and does help with future enforcement and further awareness when we're doing investigations at particular hotels, motels, and so forth. With that, we did adopt the state standards with the health coach. There is a change since the first reading. There's a section in that ordinance, 10-503, that is titled illumination and security cameras. We haven't rewritten the security camera section for that yet, so we would like to take out the words "and security cameras." And with that, everything else from the first reading is still the same.
And we'll come back later after working with the police chief and everything...
That is correct.
And legal to get those, that writing in there.
We do have certain standards in place for alcohol sales and alcohol ordinance, so we're going to look at those as we put those security camera requirements into this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Randy on this item? Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Tom, you've got the next one, please. First reading of an ordinance.
Honorable Mayor and council, tonight I'm presenting the annual adjustment for budgets for 2015, 16 year enclosed during the close process. Annually, we basically make changes as we see fit to, for the budgeted numbers to actually mirror the year-to-date numbers. This is done annually. It's just a part of the process that will bring us back into generally accepted accounting principles, GA, or GAAP principles.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
This is just the first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. I knew that. I've got a note there and...
Mayor, y'all can vote on a first reading.
We did. We just voted on it. It's not binding towards anything, but thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
And I was just trying to keep you on your toes. Next time you stop me before we get that far. Somehow that's your fault or somebody else's. I don't know. That's what I get for turning the page too quickly. No, I asked for a motion. That's on me. Mr. Lovell, you have the next item, please, sir.
Yes, Mayor. This is a resolution related to the tax allocation district for the East Main Street corridor. It's where the new Kroger is, which if you haven't been there, it's a very nice new story. Y'all should all go in and check it out. But basically, the purpose of this is to allow them to do a bond issue and to get the refund for the public infrastructure that they placed in. It's important to note that the taxes on the property are assessed normally, but they're frozen as of their value on December 31st. And the difference between December 30, as of January 1st of this year and for every year going forward, over and above that, is the funds that they are entitled for reimbursement out of. And once they get reimbursed for the total cost of the project, then they will go back to paying their full property taxes over and beyond the amount that's frozen as of December 31st. We estimate it'll be probably around 2.1 million, in that range. We haven't received the final number for them, but the county commissioner approved this at his meeting yesterday. It's my understanding the school board is considering for approval at their meeting tonight, and it is recommended for your approval.
Any discussion or questions on this?
Just to add, you know, this is one of the things that council identified a couple of years ago and was actually submitted to the voters to allow us to have these districts. So council's leadership on this allowed this rather innovative tool to help put that in place.
Absolutely. If there's no other discussion, a motion will be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hill?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We've received the invoice for our membership dues for the American Public Gas Association. We ask that y'all approve the $7,794.40 for that, and this is a budgeted item.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. McCrone?
Honorable Mayor and council, this is in relation to the joint fire burn building that is down at the Pegamine Training Facility that is utilized both by the Cardisville Fire Department and also Bartow County Fire Department. It's been in operation since 2009, and under the requirements of NFPA, it's susceptible to periodic, needs to be inspected and recertified. This will actually be the first inspection since the building went into use. So we respectfully request the approval of a contract with Fire Facilities. Fire Facilities is actually the engineer that designed and built the structure, so they're very familiar with it. The total inspection price is $11,100. It is a joint project with the Bartow County Fire, with Bartow County, and the portion that will be directly billed to the city would be $5,550. It is a budgeted item under building maintenance.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just a couple of points. This does help the ISO rating, I think I read, and this is the inspection piece. They may find stuff that needs to be repaired at that point. I'll be brought back to you. We'll split the costs.
Very good. Anything else?
Motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you again, Mayor and council. This is 56 Quail Run. They were participants in the First Time Home Buyers Program, also known as the Down Payment Assistance Program. The property owner has fulfilled their obligation. They have lived in the property for more than five years and are looking to get a release or a quick claim deed release for the property and in accordance with the procedure and policies that were put in place for that program. With that, we recommend your approval of this.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Mayor, just a question. Randy, did you have an idea how many families that this program has helped?
I believe we had 87 families throughout the program. The first year it started was in 2000, and they were able to do down payment assistance for 12 homeowners and then 25 every additional program that was added on. I believe the total came to 1,025,000. Now, all of that wasn't able to be spent during the course of the program, but the majority of it was for assistance for down payment.
It's a fantastic program. Helped a lot of people.
Eighty-seven homeowners in the city of Cardisville.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Randy, Mr. Grove?
Yeah, there are two meetings throughout the year that the council moves to morning meetings. One is Civic Youth Day in the spring, and the second one is the one that conflicts with the Christmas parade. That comes this year on December the 1st. Approval of this, we'll move that meeting to a morning meeting. Can I recommend that for your approval?
Time changed for December 1st to a morning meeting. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, Mr. Grove?
Yeah, this is near governmental agreement with the county. It will establish a land bank that can be used to assemble and dispose property. Some of the things it does, it allows you to clear title, do away with the tax liens, and it frees them up for disposition of property. They don't have to follow the same kind of rules that the city council does. In order to do this, you need an agreement that sets up a board that's split with city and county leadership. These are in place in Rome, Dalton, Macon, and other places, and is a good tool to hopefully further the council's goals in redevelopment in different parts of the city. That's what it does, and it's recommended for your approval.
Thank you. Any questions on this? I will simply make a note, this came our way at our conference in Savannah, and Sam appreciates your leadership in getting us to this point. This is a good program.
We'll see if it works, but there is value in going away and learning about what other cities do.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hassabroch, you've got the next four, I believe.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Tonight, I come to you to, we have our annual maintenance and support contract for our automated meter reading, and this is a, as you know, we've got a system and the software is particular to this system, so it's a one-source software, and it's an annual update, and it's $7,615.50, and we're recommending that we update the software.
Pretty straightforward. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve. Oh, excuse me.
These are the big meters. This is where there's a lot...
These are, these are large, larger customers that we typically bill at the first of the month, and we've, we, we had, it's a good revenue stream for us, so we automate that system.
Important that they be accurate. I'm sorry, Mike.
That's okay. You're informing us. I appreciate that. You were in the process of...
I made a motion to approve.
I made a motion. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, please, Don.
Okay, we're, we're in need of replacing a 1991 line truck that, that we're having to start to weld the doors back on now, so it's time...
It's only 1991. You're done with it?
It's time to put this one out to pasture, and we put it out for bids, and we're recommending that the low bid of $213,338 to Altech Corporation be accepted. This is a capital budgeted item, and that's what we're recommending.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion?
Mayor, I have a question. Is that completely outfitted, Don? I mean, do you have to do one thing to it when it comes to you?
It's, it's ready to go.
It's ready to go.
I mean, when it, when it drives on the yard, we, if we've got a job to put it on, we can do it right then. It's a turnkey.
Do you have any specific specifications, or is this just what...
There are specifications that has to be able to, this is a line truck, and it has to be able to lift certain amount of weight to be an advantage to us. And we worked through the garage to be sure we get, get the right specifications and get their feedback and put it out to bid, but we, you do have to specify a lot of things, the size transmission, what type of tires you want on it. I mean, it's pretty complicated.
And it has to last 25 years.
We're lucky with this one. We want it to last, but we, we take care, we try our best to take care of the equipment and with the garage's support.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
A line truck is a piece of equipment that does the digging of, for the new poles, and it lifts the poles and puts them in the hole, and it also lifts other equipment like, like the new Kroger that was recently built. You have transformers that sit on the ground, and we lift those and put them in place. So you have to be able to reach out with this equipment and then set, this equipment is set over about 12,000 pounds, extended reach, so...
One of those big electric trucks, one of the big, long, white ones with the arm on it.
Where goes? Where goes?
Yeah, oh yeah, it is. What do you do with the old one? Sell it on dump deals?
We...
Lindsey might want to buy it.
We, we can sell them. They have an auction out I-20. They can be sold, or if, if we have, I wouldn't recommend another department trying to use this piece of equipment.
Good thing Greg's not here.
Yeah, right. We sometimes pass along older equipment to other departments if they, if they have a need, but this one, we, I would recommend we would sell it.
Very good. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Cable for the electric department, that's yours too.
Yes. We have three large underground construction projects coming up. First, Alpinea, Both Floor, and the Highway 20 widening project. We're in need of 10,000, a little over 10,000 feet of cable, and it's priced at $7.31 the low, the low bid on it was. So we're asking to council to accept the low bid from Erby for $75,658.50. And this, this is also included in our capital budget that we, we try to, try to foresee these things and if we know in advance, so we do put money in the budget for these items.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last item for you, Don.
These are switching cubicles for some of the above projects I just mentioned, and a switching cubicle is a place to terminate your cable where you can, you know, to come above ground with it, and we have a need for these, to construct these projects that I just mentioned, and we've got, we've, we're recommending that the low-cost bid of $45,837 be accepted. This is Gresco, and it, S&amp;C Equipment, and this, this again is a capital budgeted item.
Any discussion on this item?
Motion to approve.
And if not a motion? Not a motion? Carry just second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. We have Solid Waste has solicited bids for 400 residential garbage carts, and we recommend awarding Toder LLC for $19,270.48, which we feel is the best qualified bidder due to the performance and durability of these carts. This is a budgeted item, and we recommend approval.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mayor, to approve the best bid.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The best bid.
And second, and we got that. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on.
Thank you. The next item we have is, we are recommending the replacement of a sweeper head off of our sweeper truck. We have to, we had to replace, have to replace it at a cost of $8,869.72. This is from Tractor and Equipment Company, which is sole source for, for this item.
Okay. Once again, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Wade, Mr. Porta?
Yes, Mayor. I have three insurance deductibles that need to be paid to One Beacon, our former carrier. Got a couple of lawsuits that are still ongoing in electrical outage that we take care of. Total of these three insurance deductibles is $8,307.81. Recommend approval.
Any questions on this? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Jones, close us out.
Good evening, everyone. First up, may look a little familiar to you. We looked at this list back to the beginning of last month. We did at that time reserve the right to come back to you if we found a lower-cost vendor that we could add to it, and that's essentially what we're doing tonight. We're adding O&amp;B Enterprises for diesel fuel for our plant generators, and would ask that you approve that addition.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yeah, next up, our analytical testing for the wastewater plant design modifications for nutrient removal, the TMDL thing we've been talking about for years. This is our first substantive step in doing that project. They will form about 800 different sample, or withdraw about 800 samples from the plant in various stages. What this does is it helps the engineers to assess performance of the existing plant and gives them a point from which to start design. We solicited bids, or requested bids, rather, from Pro Quality Labs here locally and ASI Inc. in Atlanta. We got a bid back from Pro Quality in the amount of $8,004.45, but it would like to request permission for a not-to-exceed of $10,000 for this because as experience has showed us, there will be issues with the testing. The 8,000 number is if all 800 tests go perfectly, and we're just not that lucky.
Any questions?
I think, you know, while this is a little amount, when we get into this, this is the environmental piece, and there's an existing piece that we've been talking about for a long time. This is related to the total maximum daily loads. It is an unfunded mandate from the feds that we're going to have to absorb. Just, you'll get tired listening to me say that, but I think we need to remember that.
Well, Sam, I appreciate you saying that.
Well, that's not by choice.
No.
It's by mandate.
Mayor, I'll make a motion, though. Make a motion for the analytic testing not to exceed 10,000 hours.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I believe next up is Center Road.
It is.
As you're aware, we have a high-pressure system that requires pumping that is on Center Road, and we blew another pump at Center Road. It's a two-pump system, so we need to get that fixed as soon as possible. It is a Patterson pump. It will require a replacement of all the rotating parts, the impeller, bearing shaft, seals, the whole, the whole nine. That is a sole source item to Patterson. Total price for that rebuild is $5,469, and would recommend your approval.
Thank you for that. Any discussion? And if not, a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Cook Street Culvert and Sewer Improvements. This is a project that's been on our radar for a while now. We, in, I guess in, in being down there with the sinkholes and talking to Public Works, we realized we had some, some mutual work that needed to be done down there, so it has been reconceived as a joint project between Public Works and the Water Department. We solicited bids from Rent McDuffin Associates. The total price for design and construction oversight was $94,890. I believe your package sort of delineates which department will be paying for what. We'll each pay for our own design, and then we will split up the cost of construction oversight and any geotech work as needed. But this, this project will be beneficial for both departments. It will get a, an aging sewer line out of their drainage area and will allow them to open that channel up and get better flow through that area. We're hoping to get some economies of scale as well in bidding a joint project. It makes the project bigger, a little more attractive to more companies, and hope to have a good success with this one.
Is this something that happens, or that can happen more often, or is this kind of an anomaly that you would be able to jointly work with?
You know, with, with this one, I think it's a little bit unique in that it's such a small space that we're both located in. If, if I had gone out and designed a sewer independent of Tommy or Wade's job, I would have certainly put a pipe or a manhole right where they needed to be. So if we allow the two designs to evolve at the same time, the engineers can work with each other and go, "I really need that 10 square feet. Can you move this over?" And I think the city gets a better product out of it that way.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
As I recollect, we've used these guys before. They do good work, and I think they've got a local presence. Is one of the guys live in New Orleans?
They do, yes. Yeah, and as a matter of fact, they are the, they're the design engineer on the West Avenue job that we've got coming up this weekend.
Thanks. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion, and if not a motion?
Mayor, I'm, I'm proud of our promise for working together. I think other people will be, too, so I make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor to get by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Final item there, Bob?
Yes, sir. This is a change order for Jacobs Engineering. This is a project that's been going on, it was initially authorized in 2013 for design. This is related to the 36-inch and 24-inch water main that we had to relocate in support of the DOT road improvements, 41, 411, around the Pettit Creek area up there. What happened was that, that road design has evolved over time, and as our relocation plans were developed, those plans have changed, and what happened was the temporary bridges that they're going to build to, to go over Pettit Creek while they rebuild the permanent structures are going to put about 35 feet of cover over our 36-inch water main in some places. As that main is designed, the maximum depth of cover that it can survive is 22 feet, so we have a problem. We can either relocate it for probably something in the neighborhood of $600,000 or $700,000, or we can pour this protective cap over the top of it, and this change order is for the design of that protective cap that has already been constructed. And the total amount of the change order was $18,000. That would bring the total design engineering cost with all change orders included to $115,000 even.
Okay, thank you.
May I have a question?
Sure.
Bob, when you say can survive, do you mean any more than that? The 22 would collapse?
That's exactly right. It would...
Over time, or will be quick?
Yes, over time, and yes, immediately. If the pipe were to ever lose pressure, so that you don't have that outward force pushing out on the pipe, it could be a catastrophic collapse, but we've even seen where depth of cover is getting up close to the design limit. The larger the pipe, the thinner the wall, and what happens is in, where the two, two joints come together, the pipe will deflect, and it will cause a small leak where it'll push itself out of round, so actually, you could have both issues with that pipe because of the overburden.
What about on the eventuality, when you got to get down to that pipe, to have it that far? It's going to be somebody else's problem, isn't it?
No, it'll probably be my problem, but that is, that is a, we're not going to borrow tomorrow's trouble type of operation. It'll be an issue. It'll, it'll be an issue, and it will be one where, assuming it's not a catastrophic collapse, that may be the time at which we bite off relocating that section of pipe, or, you know, we have to assess what our best options are there.
I just can't imagine that, there's a lot of equipment that goes down that deep.
No, there isn't. You, you could get to it, but you would probably spend almost as much in repairing it as you would relocating it, and that's the, the assessment you'd have to make at that time, is what's the better dollar?
Gotcha. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion, if not a motion?
Motion to approve.
All in favor to get by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. While we got you up here, Bob? Pretty big weekend for the project you got going across 113.
Yeah.
Just, if you could, just breathfully tell folks what's going to be closed, when, and how you get around it.
What we're going to be doing is we will actually be cut, open cutting across West Avenue, basically at Lee Street. It's a little bit east of there, but just for the sake of, of discussion, it's at Lee Street. So obviously, with a two-foot wide, 10-foot deep ditch across West Avenue, there won't be any available through traffic until they get that plated back up. The work is scheduled to start at 6:00 PM on Friday evening. The contractor will work continuously, 24 hours, to get that thing in as fast as possible, get the road buttoned back up. What we will do is we will stop traffic, or we will actually put road close signs at West Avenue or 113 and Henderson Drive. We'll also stop it at Etowah and 113. Now, before everybody gets too concerned, because that's a large spot, remember, it's going to be closed through traffic, and the problem is, is your large tractor-trailer trucks. If they come down there to a dead end, there's no place to turn them around, so what we want to do is we want to keep the tractor-trailer traffic off of 113 between those two limits. If you live down there, you have business down there, you want to go to one of the businesses, you can get a four-wheel vehicle through there. You're not going to be able to drive all the way through. You're going to have to turn around in their parking lot or someone's driveway and come back out the same way you came in. But the detour route's essentially going to take you on Henderson Drive out to Old Mill. You can take Old Mill out to South Bridge for truck traffic, or if you're, you know, you're commuter traffic, four-wheel traffic, you can obviously take Old Mill to Etowah and then take Etowah back into town to get around that.
How about notifications for the trucks that that's going to be a situation?
Right. We've had signs out, we've done notification, there'll be additional signage, sign boards, the typical big orange detour signs. There's a, it's, because it's a DOT road, we actually had to put a traffic control plan in for DOT's approval, so they've done that, and that will all be set up on Friday before the work starts.
I think we released a map today.
We did, released a map to the media, we'll post it on social media.
Yeah. But all of, all of your side streets and that type of stuff will be open that feed into West Avenue, so there'll, there'll be ways to, to get off and to get back on for, especially for local residents.
Do you anticipate any disruption in service?
No, none at all.
Good. Okay. Thank you very much. A couple of other items. Just want to keep Bill Trotter, Garage Superintendent, and his family in our thoughts, as he lost his son earlier this week. And, you know, there's, there's people that make a big impact in our community. We lost somebody this week in Granny Marler. Carrie, I know you were at the visitation earlier and representing the city council here, so thank you for that, but Granny was a dear woman who touched a lot of lives and did a lot of good around here, and did an awful lot to make Cartersville a better place, and she will be missed, so I just wanted to get that in the record tonight. So, any other business that needs come forth, council, tonight?
Mayor, I'm just thinking about our coastline, the Georgia coastline, Savannah, some of our folks that are in harm's way, and just praying for them tonight.
We certainly know that Matthews can blow a lot of hot air, so we'll hope it goes well.
I think we've got a crew going down there to tell those guys to be safe.
Absolutely, yeah, we've got, we've got electric crews going down there, and I know the EMS is sending some, some folks down there as well, so hopefully everybody gets through that safely, so. That being said, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Adjourn.